I'm calling the June 4th, 2024 Board Meeting, or the Meeting of the Board of Education to Order Per Government Code Section 54950-EXECUTOR and Education Code Section 35140-EXECUTOR at 5:01 PM. And before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to have a moment of silence for the incident that happened today in front of El Dorado High School. All right. We would like to just give our condolences to the family and to the friends and to El Dorado High School and to our district and our staff and our teachers, to everyone who's been affected. We've all been affected today by this loss. So our prayers and our thoughts are with everyone. Marilyn, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Everyone, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all Board members minus Shawn Youngblood are present for this Okay, can I have approval of the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for June 4th, 2024, Board of Education as amended.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, I have a second by Mr. Frazier. Do we have any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Public comment cards are available in the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. We will provide a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know ahead of time so we can be prepared. We have a civility policy per Education Code 220. It prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any characteristic that is contained in the definition of hate crimes set forth in Section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. All right, and so we have several public hearings tonight. Our first public hearing will be held relative to the adoption of the 2024 to 2025 Local Control and Accountability Plan, which is the LCAP for the district. I'm going to declare the public hearing open at 5:04 PM. And we have, it looks like, five speakers. There's nothing for this one? The district budget, okay, the LCAP. We have nothing for the, oh, this is the OX LCAP. Okay. So seeing I have no speakers for the LCAP for the district, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed at 5:05 PM. A public hearing will now be held relative to the adoption of the 2024-2025 proposed budget for the district. I'll declare this hearing open at 5:05 PM. And we have five speakers for this. And so I'm just going to call all five speakers up, have a seat in the front row. Patricia Honzo, Anita Lee, Joanne Chang, Kurt Tien Yang, and David Peterson. Patricia Honzo, you will be first.
Good afternoon, and I am discussing today the 2024 district budget. This is not the usual format. I've been coming to LCAP meetings and school board meetings since my son was in first grade. He's a fifth grader now. The format of this LCAP is watered down. I sit on the Advisory Committee for the Elementary School Superintendent Advisory Board, and we only get about maybe five minutes, if any, to have conversations about feedback. So I don't really believe that's a good way to get input from the community. So it's just gaslighting the community. This format is unusual to me. It's less transparent. I'm disappointed with the lack of one budget. Why can't we get one budget for the rushed project called Universal Sports Institute? We've been asking for another separate budget for the conversion charter school happening at Bernardo Yorba Middle School. And how in these past few months, the light items have shifted mysteriously. It's very disappointing that in the fall of 2023, decisions were made to allocate funds one way, but in February of 2024, funds have been shifted like you're hoping no one notices. Well, we notice, employees notice, and taxpayers in the community must speak up and demand transparent budgets, project designs, projected budgets, and the way you're going to staff these programs and other expenses. And all fund budget is needed to be transparent. A budget with details for the Universal Sports Institute, which by the way, the contractor that applied for the request for proposals, RFP 224-15, that company is not in good standing with the California Franchise Tax Board. The FDB has them in delinquent status, so this district should not enter into a contract if these companies cannot pay their income taxes. The Bernardo Yorba Linda Middle School budget for the next fiscal year and for the next two fiscal year projections are missing in action. You've been mysteriously hiding them, the district staff isn't releasing them, they're not being posted on the website, and when the parents in the community are emailing, I don't get emails anymore. The district LCAP was posted on the district website but not attached in today's board meeting agenda. You make us hunt for the information. You make us hunt for this information that we've been asking for, for budgets, program design, and all these rushed programs. School board members have been asking for the same information. They get cut off, they get disrespected, it's like a big old power trip. You need to act like adults. Why do you make us hunt for this information?
Thank you, Patricia. Anita?
Hi. This board voted 3-2 at last month's last-minute special meeting to contractually bind PYLUSD to several costs related to the Universal Sports Institute that are highly suspicious and recklessly wasteful. One such item, Article 2 metabolic testing lab, costs $61,295.45, which is a monumental waste of taxpayer money. The same results could be accomplished at numerous off-district site locations in the area at a significantly reduced cost, usually between only $60 to $90 per test. Is the district planning to bill Medi-Cal or other personal insurance for these costs? For that might also reduce costs. Are you hiring new staff trained to run these tests? If so, how can you justify that with the impending temp teacher cuts to balance next year's budget? Additionally, the district has agreed in this same contract to pay the training lab a license fee of $80,000, and that's just for the first year. But that fee has to be renewed on an annual basis, and it looks like that will also go up every year, or at least from the second year on. Even if you can meet and enroll the goal of 200 students, that licensing fee alone divided over said 200 students amounts to $400 per student on taxpayers' dimes and PYLUSD families whose students will not benefit at all from the USI. Every item price in the contract is grossly inflated, and that is coming from other professional gym owners in the area who have looked over and reviewed the proposed contract services, contract of services and items to be purchased. And by the way, the training lab remains suspended by the Franchise Tax Board, and I also checked in with the Placentia City Hall to learn that it's not even registered to do business in Placentia. What kind of due diligence and cost-benefit analyses and comparison shopping does all this reflect? None.
Thank you. Joanne Chang?
Why has the reserves fund balance, as seen on page 39 of the PYLUSD 2023-24 budget, increased from approximately $43 million for the year ending 2020-21 to $92.3 million for the year ending 2022-23 to what is projected to be $122.9 million for the year ending 2023-24? While these numbers include the approximately $20 million mandated state minimum 5% reserve for economic uncertainty, the increase represents a 285% increase in three years. The $122.9 million reserve represents about 32% of the total 2023-24 budget for the district. Why is staff treating the district's budget as a savings account? Monies coming to the district are meant to be used for the students attending the schools this year, not for future generations. These budget numbers came directly from the PYLUSD website of the published budgets for public review.
Thank you. Kurt Tien Yang? Am I saying that right?
Perfect. The district's cafeteria fund's primary function is to provide nutritional meals to the students throughout the district. To that end, why does the 2023-24 budget project over a $9.4 million reserve in this fund? There are schools in the district that have expansion plans in place and are in need of new and repaired equipment. In light of this, the budget this year shows over an 80% reduction in monies going for just that, to repair or replace worn-out equipment. Why is that? This is yet again another budget being used as a savings account at the expense of the students currently enrolled in the district. Additionally, what happened to the $2,259,752 ending 2022-23 budget balance in the child nutrition, kitchen, infrastructure, and training funds? This money seemed to have just disappeared out of the 2023-24 budget. It makes it appear that there is money being hidden, and why are we not using it for pre-identified designated needs? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing that there's no more speakers, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed at 5:14 PM. Our next public hearing will be held relative to the adoption of the 2024-2025 Local Control and Accountability Plan for the Orange County School of Computer Sciences. I'm going to declare this hearing open at 5:15 PM. And we have one speaker, Patricia Honzo.
This is regarding the LCAP for the Computer Science Conversion School located at Bernardo Yorba Middle School. The project to teach computer science by turning one middle school into a conversion charter controlled by the school district is one form of loosening regulations and oversight. During an April 2024 video rant by trustee Leandra Blades on social media, she used the terms "less compliance" and "they'll have freedom to do it our way." I happen to like the ed code, access to educational material. I like laws and I like regulations associated with my tax dollars. This LCAP document excludes financial data for the Bernardo Yorba Linda Computer Science School. This is poorly done, and it's not up to par with what I expect from my school district. It's insulting to us that you want to roll out a computer science school without disclosing its own budget today. And hopefully in the near future, you will disclose its own budget for this year, for 2024, '25, and projections for the future. The Placentia School District Office has let me down because these budgets should have been disclosed by project, by school site. Most elementary schools get about $50,000 to operate their expenses by toilet paper, by printer paper. And then I hear that Bernardo Yorba Linda's new principal is going to get $1 million to spend on one school site. The Bernardo Yorba Linda LCAP was posted on the district website and not attached to today's June 4th school board meeting agenda. Again, you're making us hunt down these documents, and it is not fair, and I demand professionalism from you and more transparency.
Thank you, Patricia. Seeing we have no more speakers, I'm going to close this public hearing at 5:17. A public hearing will be held relative to the adoption of the 2024 to 2025 proposed budget for the Orange County School of Computer Science. I'm declaring this open at 5:17 PM. And I'm also going to close it at 5:17 PM, seeing as we have no speakers. This will move us into our public comment portion. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, Board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. We have seven people wishing to speak, and they will each have three minutes. I'm going to call your name up, and you'll have a seat in the front row, and I'm going to ask that you repeat your name before you start your public comment. Our first four speakers are Linda Cohn, Patricia Honzo, Linda Mannion, and Gloria Johnson. Linda, you'll be first.
Again, my name is Linda Cohn, and I just have to say that anything that I might say seems so unimportant in light of what has happened today. I share your sorrow, and I'm so sorry about this event. Life is very precious. To have a young life cut short like this is genuinely a tragedy. Anyway, this is what I was going to say. After I spoke at the May 7th meeting, I was politely approached by a teacher from this district who asked if I had grandchildren in the district and if I taught in this district. I said no to both questions. I was then asked how I could criticize the teachers of this district. Well, as a matter of fact, I did not criticize those teachers, nor did my friend Ed, who actually began his speech by saying "teachers good," and adding that many of you from the dais that evening spoke specifically of our teachers in teacher appreciation because we all recognize their creativity, their expertise, and their dedication to educate our children. And in that regard, I want to recognize the teachers and the administrators at Bernardo Yorba, soon to be the Orange County School of Computer Science. I've had three opportunities to see this group in action, and they are phenomenal. Their creativity, expertise, and dedication as they plan for the School of Computer Science remind me of the very best times that I had in my 32 years in the classroom when I worked with my colleagues, challenging ourselves so that we could challenge our kids. This is a great group. Thank you, Dr. Churnus, for giving them this opportunity to excel. On May the 7th, my comments were directed not at teachers but at the union, the California Teachers Association in particular. I have my script, I was recorded, and the point that I was trying to make, which apparently didn't get heard, was that there has been a significant mission shift in CTA's focus. I said that I didn't support this mission shift, and I said that I believed that a significant number of teachers would not support this mission shift as well. Now, 92% of the teachers pay their union dues, over 60% of that money goes into CTA's war chest. I do, it is my claim that CTA has declared war using our money. They've declared war on parents, on students, and on all of us. I want to cite a couple of examples. I've already mentioned that in 2019, CTA declared war on children. I see I've run out of time, so I'll have to pick up later on this.
Thank you, Linda.
But believe me, teachers are good. The unions another matter.
So my public comment today is that in March, I want to know if anyone from the school district office has officially spoken with counselors and psychologists, and have they been officially told that they are not coming back in 2024-25, next school year? The ones that are not in a Title I school, we understand are not coming back, so we want to know how you are going to fulfill the need for mental health services at all school sites. This is a topic on page 46 of 155 pages in our agenda today. The chart number is 5.6, and it's entitled Elementary School Counselors at High-Impact Schools. It's great that Title School Ones, Title I schools will have mental health services next year. Please keep in mind that all students, even those that are not foster youth or homeless, can experience anxiety, depression, and mental health. So funding is needed at all school sites, regardless of the income of the student. I also want to mention that on, as in effective June this month, 11 certified employees are resigning. That's on page 625. I also want to let the community know that 19 classified people are resigning. That's on page 608. It is sad to witness in the last three years the exodus of good teachers and the exodus of principals. The principal at Woodsrow Elementary, Yorba Linda High School, the principal at El Camino, they're leaving, and they're going to neighboring school districts which are benefiting from our talent. And so this board needs to be respectful to each other, conduct business in a transparent fashion, and have discussion, have conversations. Don't just shut down each other and tell them, "Oh, we'll get it to you later," and then never follow through. These tactics are unprofessional and poor ethics. So again, I encourage you to be more responsible, ethical, follow the Brown Act, stop talking about school board business on video rants or video programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Mannion?
Linda Mannion, president of Apple. And at the last board meeting, I mentioned that we were going to be donating money to the Unified Dance. And so I do have a check tonight. On behalf of the Association of Placentia Linda Educators, I'm proud to donate $1,662 to Yorba Linda Middle School to support the annual Unified Dance. Our members, the PYLUSD teachers, were awarded this money for their outstanding representation at the Anaheim Ducks Educator Night. The Unified Dance includes middle school and high school students in special and general education classes across the district. This event serves as an initiative fostering unity and inclusivity among the student body. Students enjoy the music played by DJ Diamond, and activities are facilitated by peer leaders from ASB, WEB, Yearbook, Unified, and Advanced Art in GEAR Up. Activities include face painting, balloon artistry, carnival cell games, and much, much more. Apple is proud and excited to support this amazing event where every student's unique strengths and abilities are valued and provided the opportunity to shine in a fun-filled
Thank you. Next is Gloria Johnson, and then after Gloria will be Sam Maiovich, Angela Eilers, and David Peterson.
Gloria Johnson, sixth grade teacher. I stand here in defense of myself and 95% of the teachers in PYL to say we are not members of the mafia or any other crime syndicates. I question why this language is still allowed within this body when there's supposed to be a civility policy. We are still professional educators with multiple college degrees, decades of classroom experience, and countless hours of professional development. Teachers who are union members advocate for working conditions because they impact student learning conditions. When teachers are supported, we provide better instruction and foster a positive learning environment. Apple works under the guidance of CTA and NEA, and all three associations share the common vision of building great public schools to provide free, universal, and quality education for all students, which is the cornerstone of our American democracy. It's been said that schoolchildren are in danger because of us? Wrong. The union was here when we were a destination district. We are still here to defend our character as we do our jobs. We manage and execute logistical, creative, and analytical tasks every single day. We meet students' individual needs and work to understand the dynamics between them. We manage stakeholder relationships with parents, admins, students, district office, and the community. And at this time of year, as we highlight the successes of our students, you cannot overlook the teachers who help nurture and guide them on their paths. There's no need to fear us as we plan kindergarten fairy tale ball, walk through California, walk through American Revolution, walk through the ancient world, Battle of the Books, Shakespeare in the Park, mock trial, middle school sports, web, PAL, avid student council, ASB music performances, and countless other enriching activities run by teachers. We advocate for policies that benefit students, and when we're supported, we can better meet their diverse needs. Teachers put kids first. It's just what we do.
Thank you.
My name is Sam Maivich. I'm a retired history teacher and academic decathlon coach from Valencia High School. Recently, acolytes from the current board majority, acolytes for the current board majority, specifically Nancy Reichel, completely failed in their attempt to use the 2018 U.S. News and World Report College Readiness Index to show how poorly previous superintendents performed in preparing our students for college. For one, they did not take the trouble to understand what the index is actually measuring. More disturbingly, by that very measure, Superintendent Churnus is performing abysmally. In 2018, the College Readiness Index for the PYLUSD was actually quite good. In that year, the number stood at 46.3. By comparison, the current index number for the highly successful Irvine Unified School District is 40.8. For Fullerton, it is 31.4, Claremont 30.6, and Tustin 26.9. In 2018, the PYLUSD thus stood among the most highly rated districts in Orange County. Contrast that with today. The current board has overseen a 52% decline in this index. It has fallen from 46.3 under Superintendent Elsasser to 22.1 under Superintendent Churnus. Every indicator points to a continued deterioration as many of our best managers have chosen or been coerced into leaving a district in which the current board prefers to fight culture wars rather than promote equal education for all. Under the current board leadership, the district will continue to get older, less educated, less productive, less diverse, and less attractive to families looking for a place to raise their children. Our college readiness may be in steep decline, but a few dozen homeschooled, self-proclaimed elite athletes will have an awesome hyperbaric chamber in which to ponder their imaginary futures.
As a mom of three in this district, I'm sorry, I'm Angela Eilers. As a mom of three in this district, I have seen firsthand how much teachers have made an impact on their students. When community members call teachers stupid, dumb, or cabal, I'd like to ask, how is this not a hostile work environment? Why do I continue to come before you and say the same thing month after month? Because I'm ashamed at the way teachers have been demonized by the members of our community with no pushback from board leadership. To say I'm not shocked is an understatement. One just needs to watch the board meetings from the last few months to witness how one trustee is treated with such disrespect and consistently silenced when she dare ask a question about a project with a million-dollar price tag. I mean, that's just insane. They deserve a voice too. When you are telling her to be quiet and stop speaking, you are silencing her trustee area, and those constituents voted for her to ask the hard questions. As we wrap up the school year, I'd like to thank Mr. Plunkett at Travis Ranch for inspiring math students, he's part of the union by the way, Mr. Hipwell, Mr. Walls, Ms. Ferris, and Mrs. Messick at YLHS, probably all union members as well. These are just some of the teachers that deserve our respect for These are just some of the teachers that deserve our respect for all they do. Last thing, for those who don't understand how a union works, the teachers' union is made up of teachers. When you call the union bad, you're calling its members who are teachers bad.
Thank you. David?
Greetings. Dave Peterson, and I'm a newbie at this stuff. I think last meeting was my first time I talked, and so we're getting on to the idea of how we work. Retired teacher, special education, a teacher, well, pastor seventeen years in Yorba Linda, and then forty-six years resident in Yorba Linda. I'd like to go with the good props first, and I want to congratulate Madam President because in the two prior times, as I was watching you as you was direct conversation, at first, it didn't seem like Marilyn was getting enough time to really have time to express. But last meeting, you expanded that. I think you gave her three-hundred percent more time, and I appreciate that. That's cool. Todd, want to give you some props. When we were working with the budget numbers last time and the idea of understanding that the U S I has three steps of the budget design, and so the understanding that the first one is the one-point-six, you know, that's separate from the other two, two and three. And I think your comments were very balancing, as you said, you know, if we come up later on and say, "We don't need the recovery part," I thought that gave balance. I appreciate that. In terms of the homework part, the, let's see, one minute, three seconds, the, some have campaigned, campaigned here, and we talked about the unions as being kind of the evil guys. I retired from L A U S D, so I know, I know where the dark skeletons are in the background. You know, when you come to Apple here, it's like, not even a comparison. So I, I, my homework for, for you folks that aren't familiar with Apple, then sit down with Linda, get to know her better, just sit down and listen to each other. I think you'll find out that in terms of the policy issues, it's, it's not the, the big scary thing that C T A and, and the other pieces of the union through the state go on. And because basically, I think we're all here trying to find common ground to work forward. And, and then just a little bit of homework for Madam President, a little on the Roberts rules. I noticed there were a couple of things last item, last meeting that were kind of a little out of, out of order. But I thank you much for each of you and what you're doing. It takes a lot of work, and I was sitting at the corner of Placentia Boulevard and Valencia, and I didn't know why all those cops were in the middle of the area, having to make a long roundabout, and then I found out that it was a student at Eldorado that passed. And, you know, I had a guy that was gangbanged when I worked in East L.A., and it really hits the heart of a teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move to our consent calendar. Actions proposed for the consent calendar items are consistent with the practices of the district and our dean routine in nature. The trustees have already received board and agenda backup information in advance of scheduled meetings and are prepared to vote with knowledge on the block vote items. Are there any items today that need to be polled?
I'd like to poll ten-three, please. Ten-point-three.
Ten-point-three? Okay. I'll need a motion to approve.
No, the one I was going to pull, you guys amended, so I'm, I'm good.
Good. Okay, so we're going to poll ten-three, and so I need a motion to approve the, the rest of the listed recommendations.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Fraser, a second by Mrs. Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And I am an aye. The motion carries four-zero, and so we'll return to ten-point-three, and can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve a consultant services agreement for project management and interior space planning services for various projects with Schoolhouse Advisors effective June five, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck and a second by Mrs. Anderson.
In our backup material, talks about Valencia High School planning related to this, can you tell me if this is related to the, the kitchen, please?
It's part of it, yes. So we, as a district, we've been using the same architectural services firms for a long time, and so we need to have other options, and so Schoolhouse is one of them. Yes, we're looking at different options at Valencia. There's a, I mean, the cafeteria is one piece, and there's, there's a few other projects going on as well that, that we need their help with. But we're evaluating different potential areas for that, for that cafeteria or the kitchen to be built or repurposed in a different area, depending on, we're looking at different options to make sure we have the best cost-effective option for the district.
That's great to hear. I'm happy to hear that. That was my only question.
Perfect. All right, so we're, oh, hold on. Somebody's hitting the mic.
Are those projects, the additional projects at Valencia, are those outlined in the five-year facilities plan? Are these new items?
I'd have to double-check. It's, I'm sure that part of it is, but there are, as we go through the year, we're requested to do different things. I put up a shade structure and different things, and so I know that one of them's a shade structure that we need to have some, some services on as well at Valencia. So it may or may not, depending on the cost of the project, be part of that five-year thing, because it might be a smaller project.
Okay. Can you send us a list?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion carries four to zero. And so I know we had a moment of silence, and we're not really releasing the name, but I also think that we will adjourn in memory of our student today who, who died this morning in that fatal car accident. And once again, our thoughts, our prayers, everything is with the family and with everyone in the district, our staff, our teachers. His first grade teacher reached out and was, you know, just devastated at this, and so I know it affects everyone. So we will close in, in his memory tonight. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we close in honor of our student, and everybody should hug their children.
Yes.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Anderson. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is a four-zero vote, and our next scheduled meeting will be June eighteenth of twenty-twenty-four, and I'm sure we'll see you all then.